Good to go.
Okay, thanks, Nick, and welcome, everyone. Thanks for your patience while we get started here. Sorting a little, a couple of technical issues. My name is Mark Kiefer. I'm the chairman. I'm calling together, calling to order the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission public hearing at 5:03 PM on Thursday, October 16th, 2025. This is the October 2025 hearing of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission. Also present are Commission Chair, Vice Chair Arian Allen, as well as Commissioners Finegold, Jackson, and Steele. Today, the Commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the several subsequent amendments. We are conducting this meeting online, which they have Zoom, to ensure public access to the deliberations of Beacon Hill Architectural Commission. The public may access this video, this call through telephone and video conferencing. As you may have heard, the, the hearing is being recorded, so all further conversations between Commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has adjourned. And at this point, we like to acknowledge any media or elected officials that are present. Any media or elected officials? You make yourself known if, if you are here.
See Dan.
Dan Murphy from the Beacon Hill Times. Welcome, Dan. Anyone else? And we'll, there's Dan. Forgive us if we are not seeing you, but we'll certainly acknowledge you if you're here and we find you. Okay, members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions, provide public comment and applications and discussions. To do so, we'll give you a heads up in advance. We're going to do that sort of as we do hit each application. We'll let you know when it's time to take public comment. At that time, if you want to be heard on the record, you'll need to raise your hand, quote unquote, in the Zoom application. And to do that, you will hit the button sort of at the bottom of your screen on your, on your Zoom panel that says raise hand. And we will, Nick will need to unmute you and we'll acknowledge you in turn. Okay. So with that, we're ready to get started. We've got one application violation. Oh, sorry. We got, we've got to first ratify the meet, the meeting minutes from last time. And those are, that is to say, the September meeting minutes. Does anyone have any revisions, questions, concerns, comments regarding the September 18th, 2025 public hearing minutes? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I motion to approve.
Okay, do I hear a second? We will vote. Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Finegold?
Oh, I think Mo was having some, well, you should be able to unmute yourself now. You're doing it. There it is.
Thank you.
Sorry about.
Okay, Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye and Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Great. The public hearing minutes for the September 18th, 2025 public hearing are approved. We'll move on now to violation review and we've got one item on the agenda, which is 105 Charles Street. Is there a representative from 105 Charles Street present? If so, please raise your hand. Nick will unmute you. I see Julianne.
Yes, hello.
Hello, how are you? Welcome. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much for your time today.
We've got the info, but for the benefit of the Commission and the public, you want to just give us a quick, you are, as I would understand it, seeking to ostensibly ratify the installation that's already been made with respect to this intercom system. So you want to give us a quick summary of what it is that you're proposing to rectify this violation?
I think that's with me. I'm Shannon. I'm with Monte French Design Studio. We're the architecture firm working with ownership on this project.
Sorry, Julianne, we have you coming up next. Sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. But there's two applications that are 105.
Yeah, we have a couple of things coming up today. So yes, so Monte French was looking at the intercom violation, basically an unapproved intercom with the kind of lit interface, the butterfly system. So if you go to the next slide, I'll take you through some existing conditions and our proposed solution. So here we are at 105 Charles. We can go to the next slide. So a bit of a closer look at the current state of the intercom. If you go to the next slide, a little more detailed view of how you can see that lit interface from the street level. And we can go to the next slide, just some dimensions to give people a frame of reference for how large the existing system is. You can see on the right-hand side is the mail unit, on the left-hand side, the trim to the front entry of the building. So you can go to the next slide. A couple more dimensions to give folks some reference. So in the next slide, you can see our proposed solution is basically to provide a brass covering to the intercom that would cover the entire lit interface and the base plate made of brass. So you can go to the next slide. The rendering here is a little bit aged. We used a reference from 87 Beacon Street, I believe. So the intent would be to have kind of a polished brass etching with our address and some instructional etching. And if you go to the next slide, the intent would be that the hinge would be on the right side of the intercom so that when you swing it open to use the intercom system, the covering itself would block that lit interface from the street view as well. And if you go to the next slide, we just have some pricing for what we estimate the cost to be to produce the intercom covering, just shy, just a little over $2,000 to produce the covering with the etching. And then we anticipate a day, just a day's labor to install that intercom covering. So if you go to the previous slide, maybe I'll leave it, leave folks with this image and would welcome any comments or questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick clarifying, two quick clarifying questions. Forgive me. I know Nick has explained this to me and we looked at this in advance, but I'm not quite remembering. This is one building or is it more than one where you have?
Yes. So actually forgot to mention that. The violation is for 105, 107, and 109. All three properties are under the same ownership. They have essentially identical conditions. So we would be proposing identical solutions. And kind of the images provided here would be a representative of the other two projects as well. So I guess we can open the discussion up to 105, 107, and 109. You can see in the next image that kind of to the, the left two properties are 107, 109, basically identical to 105, which is highlighted here.
That have these identical or very similar storefronts with the three windows on the top above the door. So there's an entry for each. You've got one of these intercom systems on each of the three and you're proposing to cover each of the three with the brass box. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and the other question was, right now, there's a, there's a sort of silver colored metal panel behind the box. Is that going to be completely covered or otherwise removed?
The intent would be to completely cover that silver plate, just to minimize the labor required for the covering. So the covering would cover the kind of intercom box with the butterfly and the silver plate.
Okay, do you need, is, is the, is the opening behind the silver plate as large as the silver plate? Or could you just remove the silver plate and make the brass box smaller? So it's only as big as the butterfly system?
That is not something that we've further investigated. We could certainly look into that. The intent to leave the silver plate as it is would just be to minimize labor and time cost for installing the covering.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions before we, Nick, are we going to take public comment here? Sorry.
You're okay, Mark. Yes, we do take public comment for violations.
Any other questions, just clarifying questions for the moment from Commission before we take public comment?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Finegold.
The, go back to the dimensions, please. The, the brass plate cover will be 12 and 13 inches tall, but the stainless or whatever it is, the white metal piece plate behind it is much bigger.
It is. It's about 20 inches long.
And you're going to see that, excuse me, and you're going to see that after the brass plate is installed as a cover. So you'll see this silver plate or whatever it is, white plate.
And if you go, I think, two images further, you can see some proposed dimensions for the brass covering. The intent would be that the brass covering would completely cover the silver plate. And here, that kind of metal piece you see directly above is an address placard that we have above the existing intercom.
Oh, so it wasn't clear to me that you're going to cover the entire white metal piece.
That's correct.
Oh, thank you. All right, that's all.
Okay, anyone else? That was Mo. I was, that's what I was asking and I thought if they could make it smaller and get rid of the white metal piece, maybe even better.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, why don't we go ahead and take public comment if you want to be heard on the record? You want, you'll need to raise your hand in the Zoom using the button at the bottom. Nick will call on you and turn in, unmute you.
Okay, first up we have is Rochelle. Rochelle, go ahead.
Hi, Beacon Hill Civic Association. We do not oppose the proposed brass covering as it satisfies guideline E7. End of comment.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other public comment, Mark, so I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Rochelle. And, and just very quickly, this solution is something we have approved before. It's not automatic by any means. It's unfortunate that these new video screen systems have proliferated on the hill. But this is a method we've used to mitigate their impact in a number of cases. In consultation with Nick, he's confirmed that this does fit the criteria that we have loosely applied. It's inside the, this, this entry, so not right on the street. There aren't sort of multiple buildings, businesses in the building and so forth. And
It's not obstructing architectural detail.
Right, right. And so this will just improve the aesthetics of this. We've done this in a number of cases. One Chestnut, 108 Mount Vernon is maybe prominent examples that are analogous, especially one Chestnut, similar entryway. So it's, again, we prefer that these things, these intercom things not be installed in the first instance, but this is an approved treatment for remitting them when they do prop up. So I think I'm fine with it. I would like to see it get smaller if possible. I don't think I want to require that. But if we could simply make the, take that backing panel out, paint out anything that needs to be, you know, painted in its place and make the brass box even smaller. So it just fits the butterfly system, I think, even better.
Well, quick question, Mark. I definitely appreciate where you're going on this. You know I do. But if the civic association is saying that this is doable and this is the standard, that's what Nick just, just said, why don't we keep it as it is and move forward? Because it's already matching with a standard that we have in place. We don't need to do it.
I was only suggesting that if it could be made a little smaller, that that might be even better. Again, I'm not, I'm not wedded to it. So if you prefer just to prove it as is, that's fine, too.
I was getting ready to motion to do so.
Yep. Any, not to cut us off here, but it sounds like we don't have a lot of dissent on this one. Any, go ahead. Do you want to make a motion, Arian?
I motion to accept the application as it stands.
Okay, and just to clarify, I think we need to both dismiss the violation and approve the application. Is that correct, Nick?
You got it, Mark.
Okay, so Arian, you want to just amend your motion so it's clear we're, we're both dismissing the violation and approving the application?
All right, so in this motion, we are dismissing the violation and approving the application as it has been submitted.
Great. Do I hear a second? Okay, just one more chance, any discussion on the motion? Okay, we will vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Finegold? Did we lose Commissioner Finegold? Mo, are you there?
He's gone.
Well, he does seem to be gone. Okay, Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, the motion is approved, so the application is approved, violation is dismissed. You will get a letter from Nick confirming our determination. If you have any questions, please feel free to follow up with Nick directly. Thank you for coming in.
Thanks, folks.
Thanks.
There's Mo. Mo's back.
Okay. Sorry, we lost you there, Mo. Next on the agenda.
Mark, just one second here. I just want to help make sure I got Julianne taken care of here.
Oh, sure.
Yes, yes, okay. She's, Julianne, you are the application after this next one, okay?
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sorry about the confusion.
No worries.
All right, next up we have is our friend Tim. Where's Tim?
Tim, Seven Smith Court. Oh, there you are. Let's see. Hi, Tim.
Yes.
I want to just give us a quick summary of what you have in mind for Seven Smith Court, please.
Yes, and if you could also open up the mic for Michael Robertson. He's the owner and is with us tonight.
Oh, there he is right there.
Thank you, Nick.
Oh, before we get started on this, just a quick housekeeping matter. I'm not going to recuse myself on this, but just in the interest of disclosure, I will disclose for the record, I am a member of the, of the local Beacon Hill Board for the Rogerson Communities Properties, including the Peter Fanny House, which is two properties away from this in the back. Just FYI, so just making a disclosure on the record. Please, go ahead, Tim.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I did have some photos. I don't know, Nick, if you have the one that says presentation, but we could start with this if you'd like. There's an existing roof deck here. You see on the, what's called the roof demo plan. The client, the owner is looking for a modest increase in the size of that deck. There's no real visibility. There is a mock-up in place and it's not visible from Joy Street. I didn't, I do have a photo of that if you'd like to see the view from Joy Street, but it's, it's, you know, very, at the very end of Smith Court. So it's not visible and that's why the deck is set back from the front. And then similarly, the, there is, the only other possible view is from South Russell Street outside the playground behind the Fannual School. And currently, you know, I, I was trying to see it. There's no visibility because it's very, you know, they did a lot of plantings in the garden there. It's densely planted and can't really see the, the deck. And so I think the deck probably falls under the exemption part. The only thing that would be a consideration for the Commission, I think, is the, the stairway headhouse that the owner would like to have. And the next drawing shows the elevation of that and there's a little axonometric on the left side. So right now, access to this roof is very difficult. You have to basically crawl on your knees to get up there. It's so low. And so to make the deck safer and more accessible to the owner, we would like permission to build this little roof here. We did submit a alternate of a sliding hatch. If we were to build this particular headhouse, it would require a zoning variance for FAR from inspectional service, from the zoning board of appeal. So I know you can't vote on the headhouse tonight, but we didn't want to show you what we were thinking. The, the sliding hatch proposal would be in conformance with the zoning regulations and would not be visible from a public way. So the main discussion was really as to whether we could get permission to build this headhouse that you see. I've kept it as small as possible. We would sheath it in copper. And as I mentioned previously, I, I don't know if there'd be much visibility. There would be a little bit, I believe, when the, during the wintertime when the leaves are gone. But that's not possible to, to verify that right now.
Tim, you mentioned a mock-up. I went out and looked at this from the South Russell side and I could see that railing on the house next door, which conveniently is in your, in your drawing in the lower left there.
Yes, you can see that railing. Yes.
Uh, and actually the, in the, in the, to the right in the diagram, the center of the bottom of the diagram, the, the upper railing there, I could see that railing.
That's five, five Smith Court. Yes.
Yeah, but I, I don't recall seeing a mock-up for the headhouse. Is, is that what you're saying? You've mocked up?
No, we mocked up the roof deck enlargement. Yes.
I see. Okay. Okay, that explains it then. Right. You could see, as I mentioned, you could see that, that railing from five next door, but from about a four-foot stretch of South Russell through the fence, through the trees. You know, the trees through which you see it, I think, will lose some leaves and so forth. But there's that large stand of hemlocks in the garden that are very tall and they're evergreens. And so that is really going to shield the rest of the view from anything but, I think, that four to six-foot stretch of South Russell through the fence. But I couldn't get a sense of how visible that headhouse would be then because, as you said, it's not mocked up at present. Now, again, just to clarify, you're saying you believe you need zoning relief to do the headhouse as it's shown here, but not the hatch?
Correct. Yeah, the hatch is allowed under the zoning, but they would consider this additional FAR, although it's, it's really just the stair coming right up to the roof, but that's how ISD looks at that. Yes.
Right, okay. I mean, no, we, as you probably know, we kind of have a standing policy not to adjudicate applications that are not ripe because of lingering zoning.
Yes, and that's why I said it that way. Yes.
Right. But it is, is it your, your view, your estimation, your, your best judgment that the hatch alternative, which I see is not, is that actually shown here? Do we have a?
If I can share my screen, I'd be happy to show it if, if you'd like, but
I mean, what?
I had, I had sent it to Nick early, previously. I think it was just Monday I sent it. Yep.
Tim, I think it'd be a whole lot easier if you just, I'll just make you a co-host so you can share your screen. Yeah, appreciate you. Yeah.
Oops, I think I shared your screen here. Hold on for a second. Let me try this again. Let me. Oh, I see the problem. Here we go. Great. All right. Coming right up. Technology. Yeah, so this is the, the view. I took the photo from the playground and what Mark mentioned, and I'll make this larger. This is the railing that you see on Five Smith Court. And this is the, the neighbor's building. So Seven Smith Court is to the right of this structure that you see here. So the, the roof would kind of be right where I'm, where my cursor is, you know, that headhouse roof might, you might see just a little bit of it. And, you know, I think the right thing would be to mock it up for you if we proceed with that approach. And then this is the drawing of the, this shows the hatch here. So you can see under the zoning code, if this is kept to less than 30 inches above the roof, it's an allowed roof access method. And this hatch would just slide over and then you could walk up the stair. But I think you can kind of get a feel for how, how tight the stair is here. It's a, and, you know, as I mentioned, the current headroom, I bumped my head pretty good when I was up there doing measurements. It's, and this is a kind of a view that shows the, the sliding hatch, which I, I don't believe is visible from a public way.
Yeah, it seems unlikely or if it is, pretty minimal. Can you, can you then, by comparison, go back to the one with the headhouse? Because that was very helpful, that photograph you showed of the view through the playground.
Yes.
And now we have, we have the kind of, to orient us, that railing on Five Smith Court next door, that one. Okay, so the top of the headhouse would be lower than the top of the railing that's visible. So, yeah, if you can just circle that again, so the, yeah, right there, there is your proposed bigger version of the headhouse, but the top of it is, I don't know, a foot or something below, maybe.
Yes, yeah. And I could actually, I could probably squeeze it down even a little lower. I'm allowed, a door like this can be six foot four inches high rather than the minimum six foot eight for most doors. So I could, you know, I could squeeze a little more out of that.
Okay, can we go back to the photo you took through the playground? Okay, so we would see this. Can you just orient us again?
Probably, there might be a little bit right here that would be visible, yeah. Because you see mostly the back railing of the.
Yeah, so it's going to be, whatever you see is going to be against that railing from.
Right. And this is the South Russell building that kind of cuts off most of the view.
Right. Okay. Now, that's very helpful. Appreciate that. In light of that, I, I'm having a hard time getting too exercised about that. Again, this is, this is, by the way, this is, you're in the playground when you took this?
Yes, yeah, because from the street, I really couldn't see much.
Yeah, so this, this view would be even more distant from the public way.
Right.
And through a fence. And if you go to the left or to the right, you go to the right, the building cuts it off. If you go to the left, you can see the beginnings of that big stand of trees on the side of the garden. But it's, it's mostly, yeah, right there. It's mostly evergreen. So even when the leaves come down, those trees will remain. So it really is a quite a small patch of street from which, a public way, from which this is going to be visible, if it's visible at all. There is the, the question of the zoning. Do you have a read on that at this point? Or a sense? I mean, it's only a two-story house, right? So it's.
Correct. Yeah, it's still, it's already over the FAR already. It's existing. And so, yeah, I, you know, it would come, we'd have to work with the neighbors and talk to them about it. But I, you know, we didn't want to go down that path too far without the Architectural Commission feeling, you know, having some level of comfort with the concept. Yeah.
I see. Yeah, so I realized it's a bit of a catch-22 here, right? Okay, Commissioners, any, any further clarifying questions before we take public comment on this? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and do that. If you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand using this button on the bottom of your Zoom panel and Nick will unmute you.
Okay, first up we have is Rochelle. Rochelle, go ahead.
Okay, so first I want to direct you guys to all the photos that were submitted in the Beacon Hill Civic Association document. The mock-up, which is just the yellow taping of the roof deck, is easily visible, but the photos don't do it justice from standing in front of the basketball court doors and across the street at 21 South Russell. And that's with the trees and the leaves right now. But once there was a, like a third story proposed to be on top of this house, so there were photos taken then of that mock-up to discern that it is very visible when there are no leaves. And, um, yeah, and so in our comment, we took out the headhouse comment because we thought it was turning into just a sliding hatch. And so if it was staying as a headhouse, our comment would be like, we'd want to stick with the guideline that is only allowing what, like headhouses and sliding patches that aren't visible from a public way and asked to wait to see the mock-up that doesn't exist of this headhouse when there aren't leaves on this, on the trees. And now I'll read the rest of the comment. Okay. So we do not oppose the extension of the deck railing if it retains the same visual impact as the existing railing, which was approved by the BACAC in 1993. Even though guideline C3 states that deck enclosures that are visible from a public way are inappropriate and prohibits opec screening fences on roofs. Further, it would be more appropriate to remove any remaining lattice fencing and use a more transparent, traditional, slim, black picket rail. End of comment.
Rochelle, what's, what are the doors to the basketball court that you referred to? I'm not sure I, I remember doors there.
Oh, well, gate doors. So there is a park, not a playground, and then there is a basketball court. And they both have two different entries and two different gate doors. And so the photo that Tim was showing is. that Tim was showing is at the gate doors to the park, but you go down a bit further, then you're at the gate doors to the basketball court, and then there is a, and then the, you have the dense was it like trees that don't lose their foliage in winter, they don't divide the whole width of the playground, sorry, basketball court from the park? So there's still a large amount of gap space, so you can easily stand on, like in front of those gate doors.
Okay, yeah, that's where I was standing, when I looked at it, yeah, that's where I was standing. Thank you. I mean, I, I at least from from standing on that side of the sidewalk by the gate, I, again, it was, it was probably no more than about a six-foot stretch from which I could see this. So I I guess I wouldn't personally characterize it as highly visible. And again, I think it's, to my mind, relevant that it's against the backdrop of this roof deck railing on the building above. We've certainly made a distinction in the past in in adjudicating things that go on the roof between things against the open sky versus things that are against more building or other sort of utilitarian appurtenances and so forth. We denied a large headhouse at twenty, thirty. Forgive me, which one is it? On Beacon Street?
Forty-eight.
Further down.
Oh.
Sixty?
Fifty-six, I think it was.
Fifty-six, thank you, yeah, sorry.
Thanks, Tim.
Six, because it was quite prominently visible from a large section of the comment against the open sky and so forth. And so I think this is hardly an analog of that circumstance, but any other public comment?
Yep, we have a public comment from Patricia. Patricia, go ahead.
Yes, hi, everyone. I'm from the Beacon Hill Civic Association, and I just have a question for you, Tim. We've worked together often. You know, if you get a refusal from ISD for excessive FAR for the headhouse, that would mean that you would have to then do the whole community process, as I understand, correct?
That is correct, yes.
You would have in a butters meeting that you would come to our zoning and licensing, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So that's something that is just not determined yet, right?
Right, well, we're here is to sort of, before, you know, that's a big investment for my clients, so we just wanted to kind of get a feel from the Architectural Commission if if, you know, if, what the response was really, and knowing that we could do the sliding hatch, but the the headhouse is the preferred solution from the owner's point of view, and would certainly be a better solution. The hatches are nice, but they they do break, the things happen to them, and a standard old door is is hard to beat, yep.
But you're not looking for approval tonight from the Architectural Commission for the the headhouse?
No, for the for the deck, and if we did do a sliding hatch, we would like to have that as an approval in place, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Patricia. Anyone else want to be heard?
Mark, there's, there's no other public comment. If I could just make a quick suggestion, though, from staff perspective, just being mindful of the areas of our purview. We don't have any purview of the interior workings of the building. So it's my recommendation to follow the guidelines in terms of what is in our purview and what's recommended on the guidelines. It would be staff's recommendation to do the hatch rather than the headhouse.
Okay, the part about the interior, though, what what, how is that implicated here?
They're discussing how to get access up to the roof deck in terms of the stairs and being difficult.
Oh, right, yeah, that's that's not a consideration for us. It's helpful to understand why, why, the motivation for the proposal, but right, it doesn't enter into our, into our decision. Thank you, Nick, for clarifying that.
Being extra cautious.
Yes, for sure. Appreciate that. Okay, so it's, okay, so it's it's not, you've determined that it's going to require zoning relief. We normally don't think, don't don't consider things that haven't been gotten zoning relief if needed, but there's a proposal on the table here for this hatch as an alternative. So Commissioners, one alternative we would have is to potentially approve the version, if if we're okay with it, for the hatch, which would enable the applicant to go ahead and build that if they want to. And then they could make, take a further decision as to whether or not they would move forward with the the larger headhouse proposal, understanding they'd have to come back to us. But it sounds like they are asking for something akin to an advisory here to get a sense of whether or not we would entertain or we would be likely to approve such a thing. So let me start by saying I would be fine approving the deck and the hatch version tonight. My feelings with respect to the headhouse are that I would not reject it out of hand, which is to say that I that I would could certainly consider it. I don't, as, Tim, you may have heard me say, I know Nick has, I don't love advisory reviews, because of course we can't commit ourselves to anything, and we reserve the right to change our mind.
Of course.
But
I think a mockup would be the way to really make that, I would think, to help make that decision, yep.
That would be very helpful, and and I think particularly since if if you're amenable to that, your client is amenable to that, that would certainly be a a way forward with clarity, that would give us more clarity upon which to make a decision, and hopefully at least give you, okay, you're going to spend the time and money to make a mockup, but you don't have to go through the whole process if we don't wind up approving it. Okay, Commissioners, how about that? How about we approve the version with the hatch and we deny without prejudice the version with the headhouse and ask for a mockup to be installed so we can further assess its visual, visibility, visual impact?
I second that.
Okay, yeah, let's let's go ahead and make that a motion. Eric, you want to just resecond it?
I resecond it.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion or any any dissent from that path forward?
I I I don't understand why, why the mockup hadn't been made since that's the critical matter. We always have mockups of these things that are very helpful to determine the visibility. And and so that would have been helpful. It's not a big deal to make these things as far as.
Well, we'll have it for next time.
Yes, yeah, sorry about that. Yes, I should have had it there, yep.
We we forgive you.
Thank you.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve as submitted the variant using the retractable hatch and deny without prejudice the variant specifying the headhouse with the applicant requested to install a mockup of the headhouse such that we can further evaluate its visibility and visual impact. It's been moved and seconded, we will vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Feingold.
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Michael, appreciate your 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 time, and we will see you back if you decide to proceed with the headhouse version, so we can get a better look at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
With the determination, thanks. Okay, moving right along. Next is, I think twenty Lewisburg Square is out, so we're going to go to one oh five Charles again. Which was where did she go?
It over here.
Oh, there we go, Julianne.
Yes.
Yes, so we're back, I believe, Nick, on one oh five Charles. So Julianne, do you want to just give us a quick summary of what you're proposing?
Absolutely, so I hope, I'm hoping that you guys do have graphics of the mockups, if possible. If not, I do have them, of course, over here. So it is just going to be for the windows and then for the signage above, so that would be what we're looking for today. I do, are you guys able to see the mockups, if possible?
No.
Hang tight, I'm just bringing, sorry about that, bringing them up right now.
We do have it.
No worries.
We'll get it up there shortly.
No worries, yes. So ideally, the proposed signage would be for the windows, which would be window decals, and they would be of the size.
Sorry, sorry. I'm so sorry.
And and while we're, while we're getting this up here, Julianne, just to recap, since we we saw, we got a quick peek at the building before when we were talking about the intercom. Again, this is specifically for the middle of those three ostensibly identical storefronts, and you want new signs, is that right?
Yes, correct.
And the signs are twofold, right? They're on the windows, and then there there's a hanging projecting sign above.
Yes, yes, correct, yep.
And and again, just for benefit of the public and and my colleagues here, again, it's three ostensibly identical storefronts, and that is a consistent treatment with what the other two storefronts have. They, there's no belt signs on this building. There are simply projecting signs above each storefront and decals forming an additional sign on the windows of each of the two adjacent identical storefronts, correct, Julianne?
Yes, I believe so. I know from notes, as far as my end, these are just mockups, but of course, if you are interested in something smaller, of course, that is open as well. We are looking to just be similar as to other stores.
Right. Okay, so.
That's what it looks like now.
So there's the bracket, you're going to use that same bracket, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so, okay, so there we go. There there is a mockup of the decals on the windows, one on each side, and then the bracket you can see above at the very top there, so the the projecting sign hangs down above the door, and then it looks like next slide, we'll see that one, right, okay. So it's those three signs, one each on the windows and and the and the and the sign there, okay. Okay, so those are the mocked up graphics on the windows. I I have one quick clarifying question
Absolutely.
to the sign, I know this is just a computer mockup of this of the sign, but what's it made out of, and specifically the the sort of gold treatment, what is that?
Yes, so from the information that was relayed to me, so if it's for the hanging side, material will likely be made from HDU or PVC brown in color that will then be carved or CNC cut with the logo on both sides. The graphic will only be the logo Abigail Adams per the mockup and will be carved in or CNCs in painted gold, not sure of actual paint as manufacturing will be outsourced. And then again, rendering is not to scale, just a mockup, and then like they gave notes to me, if you guys want something smaller, of course, you can let us know.
Okay, very good. So typically, not just typically, I mean, pretty much universally, we require these signs to be made of wood. Whether match natural material, there are a few that are metal, so I think we're going to want to see it made of wood. And that the the letters are, this is not critical or even important, but just to clarify, they're they're going to be carved, not just applied? The the graphic?
Correct, or CNC, which I'm not well versed in that.
Yeah, but there'll be a router, we'll we'll cut out that intricate design.
Yes, yep, it would be embossed, yep.
Right, okay. And then, so dimension-wise, I believe we have historically wanted these signs to be something like no bigger than twenty-four by thirty-six or the equivalent area thereof. So we might want this to be a little smaller.
Okay.
And then likewise, the graphics on the windows in general, where we have allowed this, I think we would want the scale to be smaller. But let me, let's come back to that. I want to just make sure we're all square as to what is proposed. Okay, yeah, so that's a large graphic on each of the windows. Commissioners, any clarifying questions about exactly what's proposed? Again, there's no belt sign. So the the window decals would, consistent with our past practice, be ostensibly substituting for a belt sign. Okay, hearing none. Again, we'll discuss this further, but just want to make sure we're clear. Let's go ahead and take public comment. If you want to be heard on the record, raise your hand in the Zoom and using the button on the Zoom panel, and Nick will call on you.
Okay, first up we have is Rochelle. Rochelle, go ahead.
Beacon Hill Civic Association, we do not oppose a blade sign using the existing bracket, as that would satisfy Guideline I seven as an appropriate method of attachment. We cannot comment on whether the sign meets Guideline I six for quality materials, as we do not receive an application in time for a committee review, and similarly cannot comment if the sign proposed is a wall-mounted band sign. We oppose the two window decals as Guideline I nine limits signage to one projecting sign and a single wall-mounted sign, and Guideline I thirteen requires signage within storefronts to be appropriate and not excessive. End of comment.
Great, thank you, Rochelle. Not seeing any of the public comment marks affect you.
Okay, so with respect to the Civic Association's comment there, Rochelle's comment, the there is one of the things we regulate is the number of signs. And in general, the standard policy has been you get one projecting sign per building. There's no other projecting sign, so you're okay there, and then typically, a a flat sign per business. So you can have more than one of those, if there's more than one business in the building, again, that doesn't apply here. But I think, you know, the spirit, if not the letter of that guideline, is generally and and almost entirely or typically referring to belt signs, you can see the shape of this storefront is not conducive to a flat sign. There's no space for it, and even if there was, it would need to be curved somehow to fit on the building. And so, consistent with what was done at this location before, when there's another business in it, and in the two identical storefronts on either side, they've used window graphics for signage instead. We have just within the last two months, and certainly within the last year, approved at least two such substitutes of window decals for flat signs, and so we have I think, chosen to effectively reference in those cases the let's see, forgive me, just finding the the guideline here. Well, we have a guideline basically that that basically talks about how in any case they need to be appropriate to, it's Guideline I seven, forgive me. The number of signs, their location, and their method of attachment are significant design considerations, and each should relate to the size of the shopfront and to the scale of the building. So in in these rare cases where we've allowed the substitution of window decals for a a flat or belt signs, that's been our guiding principle is, well, okay, the the number and their size still needs to relate to the shopfront and the scale of the building and so forth. And so I think that's a reasonable way forward here. I think, again, consistent with even quite recent approvals, I'm okay with doing that in this case. There's no room for a a belt sign. I think I just would like to see the ones on the windows, maybe all three of them, a bit smaller. There is the example of the businesses on either side that have a smaller decal that's sort of up at the top. Are you are you wedded to having the decals in the center of the window?
So unfortunately, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be my decision. I would just assume, just based off the the mockups, that ideally it would be in the center, but of course, I'm open and willing to write any notes down as well, so if it's the notes are smaller and potentially placed higher, lower, of course, I'm open to that.
Well, I I think really it's just going to be the size that's the, that's the issue, and I think.
So, okay, so potentially if the if it was smaller, it could still be centered.
It it, I believe so, yeah. You know, it is, on the one to 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 your left in this diagram, they're up at the top, but again, I I don't know that we have to be so rigid in in you know, obviously the graphics are totally different. you know, obviously the graphics are totally different, the fonts are different. So I don't know that there's a, a uniformity across the businesses that's, that's required here. It just illustrates one way to do it with a smaller, uh, a smaller logo or whatever by putting it toward the top. But, um, in terms of specific guidance here, uh, there is, uh, it, it actually doesn't strictly speaking pertain to these permanent signs, but the city sign code when it references temporary signage in a window like for a sale or something like that. And understanding that that sign code is throughout the city, not just in the historic, you know, outside the historic district. It makes reference to the graphics being no larger than thirty percent of the total window area. So that, I think, would be a good starting place. And that's something I think, you know, Nick could, could perhaps work with you to finalize the dimensions if he's okay with that.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, so that, those, that's my only concern is that I would like to see the graphics and the, the projecting sign be a bit smaller with the graphics, let's say as a starting point to be, uh, uh, confirmed and, and ratified by Nick. Something like no bigger than thirty percent of the window area in each case. And then for the projecting sign, something that approximates what we've historically approved size wise for these things, which is something like twenty-four by thirty-six or the equivalent.
Okay, so ideally that would be an ideal number for you, um.
Yeah, and again, it can be of any dimension if it's the similar area. So if you wanna keep it square. For example, if your client, if that's important for the design, uh, then maybe we just scale it down so that it's no larger than in total, you know, whatever that is, six square feet.
Okay. Okay, perfect, so, okay.
And again, I think what I'm proposing, subject to the, uh, the consent of my colleagues, uh, is that we would, um, approve it with a proviso that the, that, that the, all of the signage be made smaller with some guidance as to how much smaller it needs to be. And, uh, then just, uh, having you follow up with Nick and working with him to confirm the final size.
Absolutely.
And just here, we're not talking about something really tiny. We understand it still needs to function as signage, you still need to give it some distances before that's we just don't want it to overwhelm the window.
Of course, of course. And like I said, my notes were that they, the goal is to just be similar like to other stores. So that's perfect.
Right. Okay, uh, Commissioners, any, uh, further thoughts on that? Are you okay with that as a way to forward or anyone?
I assume the windows are a display case, so the, uh, the sill surface is something where there are going to be items on display. Am I right or wrong about that, uh, Julianne?
Yes, yes. So there would be, if you're talking about the shelving behind the windows, yes, yep.
So, uh, higher is better than lower and, and smaller is better than bigger for the decal.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what they do on the, on the, on the, uh, the neighboring one. And that's what they did in the old business that was in here. But that's again, something I think I'd be comfortable leaving to Nick to finalize with them, to give them the flexibility to do that if they want.
Right.
Uh, I'm sorry, Erin, did you have a?
Oh, no, I'm saying, I'm agreeing. So are you, did you just make a motion? Are you?
Uh, anyone else wanna weigh in before I do that? I'll do that.
I don't understand the argument about the size of the decal, why we're talking about it. We, we're proving decals here and there. I think it's perfectly a good idea. Uh, and, but we are concerned with those on the exterior, which, but the, the size of the pendant sign is greater than two by, uh, three feet as proposed, correct? It's gonna be reduced in size?
Yes.
Yes.
And it'll be a different material as also suggested, so.
It'll be wood, that's right.
Um, fine, okay.
Okay, uh, in that case, I will, uh, move that the application be approved is submitted with the following provisos. Number one, that the, the projecting sign be made of wood. Uh, number two, that the projecting sign, uh, be reduced in size to make it, uh, similar in total area uh, to what we've historically approved, um, which is, I believe approximately twenty-four by thirty-six or six square feet in area i- in total with the final dimensions to be, uh, final, the, the dimensions to be finalized in consultation with staff. And that, uh, thirdly, that the size of the window decals and their exact location likewise, uh, that the size be reduced such that they, uh, are consistent with what we have, um, asked for in similar cases, using as a, as a starting point, no larger than thirty percent of the window area with the final size and location on the glass. Uh, again, to be finalized with, in consultation with and, and, uh, uh, approved by staff in advance of installation.
That's a long motion because I, I, I move it.
Is that a second, Mo?
Yeah, second.
Okay, thank you. We will vote. Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Feingold?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Keeper of Vote Side, Commissioner Steele?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, Julianne. So you'll get a letter with Nick summarizing our determination, which basically is you can have the signs, we just need them to be smaller and we need you to work with Nick and, and get him to approve in advance exactly the size, uh, that they're gonna be before you install them. How's that sound?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your time today.
Great, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, have a good one. Bye bye.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, moving right along. Uh, another sign, one twenty-five, no, uh, no one twenty-five, Charles?
That got moved to admin, Mark.
Oh, that's right, I knew that, sorry. Uh, sixty-four Chestnut. Is there a representative, I think?
Yeah, hey, I'm here.
Oh, there you go. Sixty-four Chestnut is, is that you, Nick?
Yeah, hey, Mark, how are you?
Hi, uh, thanks for coming in. Um, we have your application, but do you wanna just give us a quick?
Yeah, for sure. Um, and I must apologize that I actually have two, um, applications as I'm, I'm new to the process, but thanks everybody for, for your time tonight. I'm the homeowner of, uh, sixty-four Chestnut Street. Uh, and as I mentioned, we have two applications, one pertaining to the front steps that you're seeing uh, and two, uh, pertaining to some repainting of the exterior that we're looking to do. Nick has instructed me that we need to do these separately, so I think the first application we're gonna do first, Nick, of the front steps, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, perfect. So, we're looking to replace the, what I call the landing step and the threshold step of our home and the associated risers. Both are pretty badly damaged. The landing, if you're to stand on it, is, is clearly hollowed out due to grit and salt. Uh, since it was replaced, uh, about twenty years ago and the threshold you can see there has a very, uh, significant crack in it. So, these need, these need to be replaced. You can see some separation with, uh, with the woodwork there. Um, and we're, we're worried about water getting in, et cetera, et cetera. Our proposal and preference would be to replace the landing and the threshold steps with granite to match the lower exterior of the building and the lower two steps there that are in situ and we do not propose to change. We recognize that this is a change in the nature of the stone and are asking the commission to consider this request because we believe that granite is a more suitable material for the exterior purpose. We're a young family, this is a super high traffic area with young kids going in and out to school every day. The stone is exposed to the elements and salt in particular, which I believe has really led to the deterioration uh, that we've seen. As such, we believe granite's a more appropriate choice for, uh, for this exterior use. Um, in fact, these steps, you know, as I went through some old plans that we had last night, were actually replaced in the two thousand and four renovation of this home. Um, and a bit in poor condition, uh, since we first looked, you know, for, for a couple of years, I would say. So there is less than a twenty-year workable life with the existing material. Um, and on my walks up and down Chestnut, I've noticed that most of them tend to have granite steps, uh, presumably because of their better durability. That's all I have.
Okay, uh, that's very helpful. Uh, Nick, can I just confirm, uh, cause this is a very important point and which I was not aware. It is your representation and, uh, do you have documentation in fact that these steps were replaced? The ones in question, the marble ones that you seek to replace now, were replaced as recently as two thousand and four?
Uh, yes, I, I, I can, I can provide, I think, pretty good documentation of that. There was a very substantial renovation of this home done by the prior owners. Um, and as part of that, uh, they reinforced, um, some of the structural elements underneath that landing stone, which I anticipate would not have been possible without replacing what is above that.
Okay, um, okay, so, but you're, it's a conjecture though, not, not something you know for certain. We just wanna make sure, cause this kinda does figure into our decision here.
Uh, there are photos of the work when that stone is out. The house was renovated, I think it was a, a very substantial renovation that was eighteen months end to end. Um, I find, I'd be surprised if they pulled that stone, kept it and put it back in, but I just don't know.
And we don't know what was there before?
Unfortunately not.
Right, okay. Um, okay, uh, fair enough. So that's what we're talking about. It's the, it's the, the, the the, the threshold under the door and then the, the top step of the, the two that are there, right? Anyone replace them with granite? Um, okay, any clarifying questions from the commission?
Uh, I'd, I'd like to ask Nick, um, uh, most of the buildings on the hill have, uh, granite as the, uh, stair, uh, material typically?
Yes, that's correct, which makes this such an interesting take, yeah.
So, but I think there are periods when, uh, owners experience marbleitis and they want to sort of, uh, go with a more fancier material. But it would seem to me that characteristic of that community is to have a granite stair, which is much long lasting.
Great. Uh, Ralph and, and, and Mo, if you have a view on this, uh, can you comment further on the durability of marble? As it's, you see it here, is it likely, is it, is it conceivable that this is only from twenty, two thousand and four and it's already worn out?
I think so.
You, you can tell, but is that, is that consistent with your experience?
I'm seeing marble being replaced by granite more.
No, no, Ralph, my question is, my, my question is, does it wear out this fast, the marble?
Uh, um, uh, perhaps my colleague could speak to, uh, the length of material, uh, material time. Uh, uh, he's in a building that has, uh, marble, uh, where the granite was replaced with marble. In its renovation, right?
Well, it was brownstone that was replaced with granite actually, but, um,
No.
I, but for the same reasons, for the durability, for sure.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any experience with exterior marble slab, but I think it's a terrible material to have on the exterior because I think it's just, uh, it's a thickness, tendency to crack in the weather conditions and so forth. They, I think granite in this instance is absolutely perfect and, uh, the, it will make the whole, this particular entrance way more, more of a whole piece and therefore much more consistent.
Okay, uh, appreciate that, Mo. My, my concern, uh, Tim Candidly, was if this was, uh, both a very old and a very unusual feature, that's exactly the kind of thing that we would wanna take steps to preserve, you can imagine, cause it's a, one of these quirks or anomalies that's particularly rare. And if it was historic and rare, um, you know, that's kinda really in the sweet spot of what motivates historic preservation. If it is, uh, if it was not rare, um, such that, uh, these things kinda came and went all the time. Or, uh, it's not old, I think that kinda changes the equation i- in my mind. It does sound like it's an, notwithstanding its aesthetic qualities, it does sound like, like brownstone, it's an inferior material uh, for this purpose. And, uh, certainly, part of what we're about here, I would think, is, uh, if we're gonna make architectural changes, we want them to last a long time. So the granite certainly has that going for it. Okay, let's go ahead, since we know what we're talking about, let's take public comment on this, if you wanna be heard on the record, uh, raise your hand in the Zoom.
All right, first up we have is Rochelle. Rochelle, go ahead.
Beacon House Civic Association, we oppose this application as proposed. Replacing the historic marble does not satisfy guideline A one if it is not demonstrated as being beyond repair. Guideline A two requires replacing existing materials in kind beyond repair. And guideline A three requires evidence of a missing architectural feature, but none has been provided. End of comment.
Uh, thank you Rochelle. Uh, not seeing any of the public comment, Mark, so back to you.
Okay, uh, Commissioners, anyone else wanna be heard on this, have a view, either, uh, consistent with or dissenting from what you've heard so far?
Well, no, I'm, I think that the granite makes sense, again. We see it throughout the hill, it makes sense. My question is, Nick, what is staff thinking about this? Because if the marble was there originally, I, I can't see it still lasting this long if it was there originally.
Yeah. Um, yeah, uh, Nick and I have kind of exchanged some emails on this on the past couple of days. You know, the guidelines say that if it's a historic material, it shouldn't remain that specific material. I also understand the architects on our commission and saying that this, um, marble does not, um, it doesn't wear well. But looking on Google Street View, which goes back to around two thousand and seven, it looks like it's in a very similar condition. So my guess is that the, the marble is significantly older than that. Um, and it, it's probably best, I, I mean, I think it should probably remain the same material. Um, it is a really special circumstance and it's, there's, there's a story there that we don't understand. Um, so that's, those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. My opinion is, if marble is what it has been, then let's, let's keep that material.
Was there a reason for switching to, to granite?
Really for the durability, the, and, and to, to make it consistent with the rest of the, the, the steps. Um, okay, so, yeah, I think, Nick, uh, where, where it sounds like we find ourselves is, uh, uh, I certainly would be more comfortable approving this uh, if we had some kind of documentation that would affirm, confirm, uh, that it's not old. Uh, and I think it's kind of our responsibility, uh, and I think generally speaking, the burden is on the applicant to demonstrate that something is not historic if they seek to change it. Change something, uh, that, uh, at, at least is suggested that it, it may indeed be historic. So I think that's kinda where I'm, I'm coming out on this.
Yeah, look, if I, if I had definitive documentation, I would, I would absolutely have brought it, you know. We're a young family that bought this home from a family that lived there for fifty, for, you know, for twenty-five years after their renovation. Um, and, uh, you know, it's a very old home, over two hundred years old and, um, I, you know, I didn't get handed a lot with it, so I, uh, I understand and, and I, I, I hear the considerations.
Now, the, uh.
Chairman.
Yeah.
It seems really odd, uh, it's a hazard to be changing material as one's going up a set of stairs.
Exactly.
Fundamental. Um, so, uh, you can, I, if one can't date this, doesn't give it legitimacy. Um, it's an odd thing to do to convert from stone, uh, from granite to marble uh, as you're moving up, a, a set of stairs is typically of the same material and I believe it's a hazard.
Uh, how is it a hazard? I'm not sure I'm following that.
Because the, uh, your foot, your foot doesn't, wouldn't, your foot will catch on the nosing of the upper two. It's not, it's atypical to start with a stair that has no nosing and then convert to a stair with nosing as you're moving up.
It, it, it has, I, I agree. It has the same, the same potential error if you change the height of the riser for, within a run, which you don't do, I mean, uh, and so, besides, it's a visual mess. Yeah, I think that, I, I think the change is, is really appropriate and consistent. Uh, just as we did on seventeen seventy-two Mount Vernon, where we went from what bluestone and whatever it was, to the granite. I think, I think, I, I think the result there is just excellent. The granite, I think, I think, uh, I think the result there is just excellent. And so I I I support this change.
Okay, um, let's see, uh, you know, there's there's one other possibility that gives me some further pause here, which this uh, it sounds like the house was renovated by the prior owner twenty years ago, but obviously it's a it's a Greek revival building, late federal, early Greek revival building, eighteen twenty something vintage, I think. Uh, but it obviously underwent a a a much earlier uh, sort of colonial revival or Georgian revival renovation, probably a hundred years ago. Uh, or or more in the early twentieth century where that Oriole was added and the these unusual twelve over twelve uh, windows were added and so forth. It's kind of a lovely specimen uh, of a a very successful renovation from that period. Uh, so so it's also conceivable, I suppose, that the 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 marble was added at that point.
Yeah, it it speaks of ambition.
Sure, but but again, I think uh, features that are historic and rare are especially worthy of our attention and caution. Uh, which is why I would want to know more about when this was installed before I would be uh, in favor of it. But uh, it sounds like we don't have a consensus, but we may have enough information to vote. So we've got a couple of folks who sound like feel feel strongly about this. Does someone want to make a motion? We can just vote on it. Unless there's, I don't want to cut off discussion, but unless there's further uh, discussion on that.
Make a motion.
Okay, uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the application. This is again the first application just for the steps. Uh, as submitted, we will vote. Commissioner Allen.
Sorry, could I just, could I could I press pause on this for a second? If we're going to replace it with granite, we're going to need a sample to review and compare it to the existing granite. I just I just want to throw that out there.
Okay, uh, I I and can we just get a friendly amendment to the motion in the second of that?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so on the amended motion, which includes uh, a sample to be approved in advance by staff, Commissioner Allen?
Nay.
Uh, Commissioner Feingold?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Kiefer votes no. Commissioner Steele?
No.
Okay, so, um, the 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 motion fails. We have one other option here while we still have the the floor is we could uh, entertain a new motion uh, to uh, approve it with the proviso uh, that the applicant, before it, the 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 steps are replaced, that the applicant demonstrate or or just deny it without prejudice, I should say. Um, either approve it with a proviso or deny it without prejudice and ask the the applicant to provide documentation establishing that it's not old.
I second that.
Yeah, I I I I I'd share with the commission that I spent several hours last night going through the box that was left behind by the prior owners to try to understand what was going on with these steps. So I really did my best here and I shared with the commission what I uh, what I have on that. Um, so I understand um, the commission's perspective. Um, you know, the only alternative that I could think of that was a uh, compromise would be the the landing area, which is of greatest concern to me due to wear and tear and salt in particular. And salt and mar- marble are the thing that really I'm most concerned about. Um, you know, could be granite. I would be open to keeping the marble threshold. Um, my our goal in in living in this historic home is to maintain it. It's, you know, it's a real joy. Uh, and I do appreciate that the marble um, is unique. I do like personally prefer consistency, but you know, if the commission were entered, were to consider whether, you know, that landing could be granite, I'd certainly happily explore whether we could maintain a marble threshold and maintain that unique feature.
Okay, well, in the interest of not overcomplicating this, I appreciate you need, you want to replace your steps one way or the other. So I want to get you at least a motion that allows you to do that somehow.
I think the owner has, I think the owner has come up with a uh, an appropriate resolution.
Yeah, I mean, I have the same concerns, I I'm afraid.
I'm in the middle of a motion and voting.
Uh, I'll I'll make a motion that uh, the application be approved with the proviso that the steps be replaced in kind or um, as submitted, if and only if the applicant, the applicant is able to produce uh, definitive documentation demonstrating that the steps that are there now are no older than the recent two thousand four renovation.
I second that motion.
Okay, and the revised motion, uh, we will vote. Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Feingold?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele?
Aye.
Okay, uh, so Nick, I know that's not what you were hoping for, but that at least gives you uh, the leeway to uh, replace them in kind, so you can move forward with that. Uh, or if you somehow uncover some evidence, you never know. Uh, maybe there's an old photograph or something, uh, you can come back and uh, get the granite ones.
Alrighty.
Okay, uh, now, so we're going to move on to the second half of your application. Uh, as advertised, I'm afraid I'm going to have to leave. I had a earlier engagement and a conflict. I do apologize. Uh, but I'll just hand it over to our white uh, able uh, vice chair, Commissioner Allen for the duration of the proceedings. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, see you.
Okay, let's move forward with the next item for sixty four Chestnut Street.
Great, thanks. Um, uh, this second element of the exterior maintenance that's required is repainting. You can see visible um, peeling paint there uh, from the bay. Um, and so I'm here to discuss uh, uh, that repainting job and some proposed uh, color changes that we would like to make as we embark on that work, which we hope to complete before winter, given the poor uh, exterior condition. Um, so starting with the front, which you can see now, our proposal is to paint the front door uh, a historic navy Benjamin Moore Old Navy. Um, the vestibule to be painted an off-white, white dove specifically. And the window trims uh, and the front bay and the window trims to be off-white. In the rear, uh, in the in the rear, the proposal uh, would and the goal of the the goal of the whole thing from the granite steps to to the to the painting is to create symmetry front to back uh, top to bottom. So the proposal for the rear is to paint this rear uh, fence um, and the associated doors navy to match the front door. Uh, and the uh, window wall, which you can just make out the very, there's there's a window wall back there. Um, so this is taken from a cross branch street. Uh, I think you would just see hints of the the top of that off-white in the winter there. And then to repaint the window trims uh, off-white as well to match.
All right, Commissioners, any questions about his proposal? And these are historic, correct?
Yeah, so um, I went through these colors. They are um, historic colors. There are variations of these colors that are recommended by the Historic New England Color Palette. Um, so just confirming that for this architectural style.
Perfect. If there are any questions from the Commissioners, we are going to take questions from the public.
Is this going to be uh, semi-gloss or high gloss, the blue?
Uh, I was thinking se- semi-gloss. I would defer to the commission, honestly. I would recommend se- semi-gloss from staff perspective.
All right, excellent. Okay, and we.
All right. So we're doing public comment, sorry?
Yes, we are.
Okay, uh, first up is Rochelle. Rochelle, go ahead.
Okay, speaking of civic association, we do not oppose the painting as proposed as the colors are broadly appropriate historical colors. But light pale colors would be more historically appropriate and more typical exterior colors for this eighteen twenty six federal style house. We oppose the keypad lock as it does not satisfy guideline E five for traditional hardware. But suggest concealing it with a brass cover could allow it to satisfy both guideline E five and E seven.
Thanks, Rochelle. Yes, uh, Nick is also proposing, um. Oh, yeah, sorry, if you could just go back to, yeah, I I didn't know if this was a design review or an administrative review issue. Um, we uh, were proposing on that rear entry to have a keypad lock. Um, almost everybody on Branch Street has one of these um, installed. Uh, and it is uh, you know, an important measure uh, to get people in and out, kids in particular. Um, and seems um, very customary for all the rear entrances of the Chestnut Street houses. And so I was.
Cover it with with brass, correct?
Sorry, but everybody, everyone's is just hanging out there. Um, there are also a ton of violations back there. I'm just going to throw that out there, so I can't confirm.
Oh, you want to cover this with brass?
But to 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 be clear, though, we have approved um, things like this. But perhaps we should just request that there's a brass cover or a brass option. Yeah, well, so the the challenge with with the, I I love to, I'm I'm all open to, I'm all ears on that. The 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 wall is very flush, and so it would create a protrusion into the into the street. Um, Nick, I'd be happy to try and come up with a solution with you um, uh, on that, uh.
So you will come with a solution with staff? Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Concerns?
No.
Do you guys love this and just want to move forward? Let me know.
Like to move forward.
Yeah, I do too.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I move that we accept the uh, proponents. And he's going to work, meaning he'll work with Nick on the cover on this uh, Guji, the padlock, the number padlock, um, and otherwise accept the proposal.
Okay, so we've got to say that we're we're accepting um, the applicant uh, application as proposed, as submitted, um, with the that staff, Nick, work with him concerning the keypad and what would be appropriate in covering it, um, and we are submitting that to staff. And I'm seconding you. Okay, let's go for a vote. We've got Commissioner Jackson.
Uh, aye.
Mister Feingold, pardon me.
Aye.
And Commissioner Sandy, and I just, sorry, I just wanted.
Aye, Steel, aye.
Yeah, there you go, Mrs. Steel, and Commissioner. So that is passing. And we're going to move forward with that, with staff, all right? There you go.
All right, thank you, Nick. Thanks, Nick. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone, now. And I believe our last one tonight is seventy six?
Two more, this one and the next one.
Thirty six and the next one, so seventy six uh, Charles Street is up next.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm new at this whole, oh, we have pictures. I didn't. Excellent. We are proposing to repaint the facade of our shop. Um, the main area as well as um, over the door, the doorway as well. But what we would like to do is to enhance the on the brick. This this particular putty color is unlike anything around it to the street, to the right or to the left. And it has gobs and gobs of paint that are chipping off. And what we were hoping to do is to paint it a crisp black, which definitely reads much better and richer, I think, against the brick. The um, the door itself, the front door is black, has been black. And it's just looks so, it looks like a hodgepodge. Um, the window panes above, which is the condo above the building, are um, also painted black. And we figured that, or we were hoping that you would think that it would be fine just to harmonize the whole thing together with that color. The lighter color against, there's so much brick around there, the lighter color against the brick, in my opinion, isn't all that soothing or attractive to the eye. Um, and um, yeah, that's that's, I think, about it. Oh, yes, and also, we were hoping to be able to get permission or authority or whatever to approval to paint the air conditioner unit above the doorway as well.
Okay, so just so I can make sure that I'm getting this right. So you just, all you want to do is just match up the window and the door and and the windows above?
No, no, that's a that's a condo above. I was just stating the fact that they have black window panes up there, so it wouldn't be like an eyesore or anything. And that's that's what I meant. That's why I brought that up.
So we're just talking about the street level then?
Correct.
Yeah.
And these are all our neighborhood stores with black.
So so Commissioners, it's this window here, the door surround. And that's it.
That's it.
All right.
It's going to look good, I can tell you that.
You say you're going to paint the door as well as the door?
No, the door's already painted. We want to match, we want the rest of the woodwork to um, coincide with what the door says.
I understand that, but you painted all black.
Mm-hmm.
And the uh, window on the the big uh, store window, that gets painted black also?
Definitely.
Commissioners, um, actually, you know what, Nick? What staff's opinion on this before I had gra- grabbed my uh, help missionaries?
Yeah, so this is um, a building that has been, um, it was rebuilt in the nineteen twenties after Charles Street was widened. Um, so there may have been some alterations at that point. It is um, one of two identical buildings, the other of which is um, the building adjacent, which is the Street and Company Building. Um, that one has a similar color, but it's not the same color. I believe this is kind of a putty. The Street and Company Building is more of an off-white.
Correct.
Considering the the windows on the upper level of this building are currently black and the, um, we do have some historic documentation from the nineteen fifties or nineteen sixties um, that suggests that these um, windows um, were a darker color at one point. I would recommend approval as submitted.
All right. All right.
Cause uh, could I ask, are you saying that the white frames remain, but the window itself is painted black?
No, no.
All things black.
The wood around the window, the facade itself is painted black. The window was already very dark, so just the wind, just the the woodwork itself.
So the, well.
It would look like these other buildings that Nick is um, showing.
I I I'm trying to get a sense that this floor and the floors above the wood surrounds are not the same color.
Correct.
The uh, Ralph, these, I believe, are, are they storm windows up here? They almost look like storm windows.
They've been there, they've been there.
Oh, but there is some white trim.
Yeah, I did, um, uh, what I find challenging is the changing of the wood from first floor to upper level.
But the wood front, I mean, this, I understand.
I I I'd like, I I think the black is elegant. I'm in your corner. But the idea that you're, I I'm concerned that you're going to be asked to uh, I bet you're asking to do only the first floor while the upper levels are.
Well, the thing is, is the the upper level is a residential uh, is residential and it's it's um, a condominium. And the lower level is commercial, so people generally, well, you know, I understand what you're saying, but, okay.
And I understand your strategy.
Do you like it? That's what matters.
Well, if I, if it were your personal home and you said, I wanted to paint the living level one color and the bedroom levels another color.
Absolutely. That would be a very, very fun way approach.
Uh, Nick, please help us. Uh, Nick, please help us.
He likes it. No, I don't know.
I, I find, before Nick speaks, I find, I find it's too much of a black surface. And I'm, I question, I question changing the color of the big double-height window there.
But it's not the surface, the brick is the surface.
Uh, well, we see the uh framing as a, a surface also. Uh, and yeah, the meeting house next door has uh this cream color. Yeah, I thought this building was a part of the meeting house.
Yeah, it, it, it was, it has a nice symmetry um with having the lighter color. Have you ever considered, instead of going the black route, to go more towards the building that's almost that's almost identical to it, more towards a lighter color since that putty color?
I would, I would consider a charcoal.
It would, it would be helpful in a situation like this if we could see the adjacent buildings. You were showing some other, you were flipping, you were flipping, excuse me, you were flipping through them too quickly. Now, can we look, can we look at the streetscape? This, because we've talked a lot about in our meetings about having a variety uh and not having a commonality of color. Uh, and I just.
But.
So what, what are we talking about here?
The left one.
The left one. And Street and Company is to the right?
Yeah, I mean, the predominant color there is um white or whatever.
Yeah, ivory-cream.
Uh, I, in that view, in that view, I personally think that painting that large window of black would be a mistake.
Especially if your neighbor isn't black uh being painted also.
Yeah, yeah, but you know, if, as, as you can see in that im- image right now, there's um the gallery, which is white with black and black on each side of it, so it, and it, it's, it stands out, which is what we're trying to do here. We're trying to draw more, a little bit more attention to the facade of the building by differentiating in adding this richness. That's, that's kind of like, you know, um, the way we're, we see it. See, that's completely by its, on its own, but it still works. And it's in keeping with the Beacon Hill flavor. And there are several, many, many storefronts that are not, they're, they're not in a row in black, but they are there, and it works, and they were approved.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of examples of where the storefront is a different um color than the upper levels. Um, we're seeing a lot of examples on the screen here. Um, so you have um, Nino, or sorry, uh, you have Sevens, which is black on the bottom, white on top, um, which I know is a, another conversation. Uh, we have this storefront here that has the white color with a black on top. You have um um, it's not really applicable here.
The other direction on, on my side of the street.
Think there's more, okay.
Yeah. Meanwhile, the big, 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 no, no, on my side of the street, the other direction, I'm sorry. Um, the, the door for the meeting house is dark, wait, if you can go back, Nick, is the double doors, the giant doors, that's all high gloss black, which is right on the other side of us.
But the trim is not black.
The trim is not black.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
But what I was saying is on, on the, on the, on the Charles Street side, being that those doors are so large, and if we were black, it wouldn't look silly.
Uh, I'm sort of at a loss as to what i- is the driver. Uh, not of your project, but of, and uh, what drives the street uh in terms of um, the attitude about storefronts and color.
I think, yeah.
Uh, I'm not asking you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm asking Nick, if, uh, is there a sort of position that you take about uh coloration with regard to commercial uh programs?
Oh, I, I mean, I think it's, it's more of just the context, in my opinion, um, looking at it um holistically. Uh, but it, it's, for me, it's really as simple as that, I, yeah.
So uh you'd be perfectly comfortable with um her doing black door and uh, black commercial space frame?
The door was traditionally black.
Uh, the frame of the door being black as well as.
Not the frame, no, the whole entire door is black.
Yeah, no, we know the door's already black.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that the first floor of your building, all the woodwork would be black, and there are in a number of precedents on the street for them being a different color than the building that the, than the windows above.
Is there, is there a middle road here, Ralph? Is there, we can paint possibly the window and? I don't know, is there?
I, uh, ba- based on showing the other side of the street, her position of painting the wa- the door frame and the first floor of commercial window black, uh, she's within her, it's legitimate. Sort of, there, any number of examples around her in which that's been done. And the first floor has been treated color-wise all sorts of ways along the street. And for, it, that may add to the ambience of the street.
Okay, so you're agreeing with the applicant?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
She's, this, as much as I like consistency, she's shown me so many examples.
Okay.
Diversity.
There goes.
One question, Ralph. If we, instead of black, if we went with the idea of the charcoal, uh, uh, would that work for you with the windows?
Cause I, I, you know, it's the difference in someone being black and white and somebody being gray. Wha- 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 what do you think? Gray doesn't show very much strength?
I'm uncomfortable with this topic.
No, 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 it doesn't show, to me, gray doesn't show strength and it doesn't show as much confidence as black. And our shop is very, very unique, and I would like to have that come through on the facade of the building if at all possible.
I, I want you as my personal salesman. And relentless, um.
Actually, we gotta pull this in. Commission, is any other?
Arian, Arian, I think um, um charcoal gray, I, I would uh go with the owner. He says black, black.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no more questions from our fellow Commissioners, let's move forward with public.
You're gonna love it.
Oh, let's see what Rochelle says.
Okay, uh Rochelle, please take us out of this very awkward situation.
Okay, Beacon Hill Civic Association, we do not oppose this application as proposed. Repainting the window sashes black satisfies guideline G-one. So federal revival-style windows more typically have white window trim and sashes like its sister building next door. But the window sashes were once black is captured in a photograph from the nineteen sixties. End of comment.
Thank you, Rochelle. Okay. Uh, there is no, no other public comment. Back to you, Arian.
Okay, my fellow Commissioners. No one's opened their mouth other than else. So does anyone want to make a motion? Dear Ralph, do you wanna make a motion?
I move the application be accepted as presented.
Here we go.
Seconded.
What about us? Name off of the others.
All right.
What happens?
Why, why don't you poll the Commissioners?
I'm hearing a kind of noise, not really hearing words.
Well, don't you want to know if we, we vote for the motion?
Do you want?
Yes, oh, no, don't, sorry, you're coming, you're coming in clean. So we second it, so let us go forward. Commissioner Jackson?
I.
Commissioner Finkel?
No.
Commissioner Steel?
I.
Commissioner Allen, I. The I's have it. Nick will be following up with you. Uh, is it Dave, am I spitting, I'm forgetting name, Davah?
How do you do? Davah.
How do you do, Davah, Arian?
Yes, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Nick will be following up with you. Um, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You pulled that one out of the fire.
No. No, I, 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 well, it will, anyway.
Thank you, David. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
Have a good one, though. All right, do we have anybody for two and three West Cedar Street?
Okay, we sign off. Have a good night. Thank you, everyone. Uh, Mitch with Payne Boucher. Um, I'm here to represent uh for two and three West Cedar. Um, we're looking to replace the existing deteriorating fences uh with new cedar fencing. Um, it's to be painted Benjamin Moore soft gloss black. And we're looking to match uh the fence at Four West Cedar. So as you can see here, um, Four West Cedar uh that Nick is circling has uh a di- we're, we're looking to move from the three-inch diagonal to a tighter lattice installed in a grid like the Four West Cedar. And if you go to the next slide, we're looking for it to um also, uh, this is, this is currently what it looks like. Next slide is to align with the Four West Cedar, have the same grid structure. And uh, as you can see, we're seeking to do a little uh cutout there for branch, branch preservation as there's a branch coming through um in that location. So that is, that's what we're, we're looking to do.
All right, and Nick, what is staff feeling on this?
Uh, staff recommends approval as submitted.
All right, fellow Commissioners, any, any takeaway? Anything that you wish to say about this? All right, we'll move forward with public comment.
All right, uh Rochelle, go ahead.
Okay, Beacon Hill Civic Association, we do not oppose this application as submitted as it satisfies guideline A-three with regard to size, shape, material, and design in the comment.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I am not seeing any of the public commentary, Arian, so back to you.
I agree. All my fellow Commissioners? Any motions, any thoughts, any, anyone against this idea?
Uh, I, I move that it be approved as submitted.
All right. All right, fantastic. Commissioner Finkel?
Yes?
I, I say I, we're going to the vote.
No, you, I didn't hear a second.
Yeah.
Sandy did.
My second.
You were seconded by two people.
All right, fine.
Commissioner Steel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Jackson?
I.
Commissioner Allen, I.
Many thanks.
Any welcomes. People follow up if you, in your team.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Have a good one now. All right, moving on to administrative review. And I can't really read that. Okay, so.
I approve of submitted.
There you go, I second it. I, Commissioner Steel?
I, yes.
Commissioner Finkel?
No.
Commissioner Jackson?
I.
Commissioner Allen. Actually, you know what? We are all wrong, cause we have to get public um.
Oh, comments.
Comments on this. So we all failed on that.
Mark, Mark leaves and we fall apart.
Exactly. Any public comments on this? Okay, let's vote that we are even past stand.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, administrative review is moving forward.
All right, and I do not have any uh staff updates this evening, so we'll have some more for information for you um next week, uh but as of right now, there's nothing, so. End of presentation.
So, does anybody want to uh put a motion to end the meeting?
So moved.
Second, like. Fabulous. You know what? You can all say I, the I's have it. And fun fact, before you guys run away, and Nick, I don't know if you remember this, but about three years ago, it was agreed upon that all votes were gonna be I's, nays, the I's have, the nays have it, and we never went on to it. So fun fact, when we do that, we are actually following a new rule that everyone forgot about. But me. But me. All right, with that said, go forth and conquer. Happy Halloween and uh see you.
You next month.
All right. Have a great day. Bye, everybody.